Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to this meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to send my deepest condolences to the Vilburn family. And having said that, approval of agenda? The mayor and council wish you to acknowledge that town of Fort Smith is located within the Treaty 8 territory. The Treaty 8 territory also must of traditional homelands of Salt River First Nations, Atlantic First Nations and the indigenous matey of Fort Smith. These nations have maintained stewardship over their sacred lands throughout the generations. We honor their knowledge, teachings, tradition and the land. We are meaning, we are mindful that colonization hasn't been kind. We respectfully recognize our generational history and commit to striving, serving the, for unity in the spirit of truth and recreation. Approval agenda?
I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented. I'll second.
Questions? Um, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just add, under administration, before we go in camera, this, a couple of, of my holidays to appoint an acting SO? Thank you.
Okay. Everyone's good with that?
I am. Yes.
All in favor? All in favor, pass to us. Tonight, our presentation is Ms. Jeanne Marie Ju. If you want to take the seat there. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. I wrote to mayor and council, I think about four years ago, and they never got a reply. Another two years went by or three years. Last year, I think I wrote to mayor and council and I haven't got a reply, so I thought I should just come as a delegate. I am concerned in regards to one of the bylaws and particularly the water and sewer hookup bylaw. When we moved back in 2018, over four years ago, we were required to pay, I think something like $400 to get our water and sewer hooked up. I felt, uh, actually, I felt really insulted because I've been here all my life. And they said that was the bylaw and that were the rules. So I basically am asking mayor and council to review that bylaw to seriously consider exempting seniors from having to pay a deposit. Because what if I was a senior that could not afford it? And water and sewer is one of the basic necessities that people need. So it's either consider seriously exempting seniors or exempting long-term residents or doing away with the bylaw. But it's a bylaw that's been in place for, I don't know how long. Couldn't be that long because I don't ever recall a bylaw like that when I was on council years ago. But I just feel that this matter has to be addressed. I did ask when we did the deposit, when do we get our refund? They said either when you move or if you pass away. Any other institution in WTPC, Northwest Health, they refund you after a year. So there's no reason why the town council should be holding on to someone's deposit for that length of time. It's totally unfair. So with that, these are the comments that I wanted to make to town council. And I hope that you seriously consider my suggestions in doing your work in representing the town and particularly the seniors in a fair and compassionate manner. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Have any questions? This is councillor Ferguson.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for coming and speaking to us. I know that we've, this specific item has come up a couple of times and I know we've read and received your letter because we had talked about it here in council. And I'm sorry you didn't get a reply from us, so like, we'll follow up on that. And this is something we have been talking about actively, so we'll follow up on where we're at with that.
So it'd be nice if you make a decision, respect to it. Yeah, and I, you know, I, I really feel that if anyone's going to write to council that, you know, you could have a generic letter just saying that you received the correspondence and thank you and I don't know if you make a decision to reply to them, but I think just an acknowledgement of any type of correspondence be appreciated by the person who sends it.
This follow-up is, I, we're working on that too. I know that we've worked with having communication and all of our correspondence be brought up to us and making sure that we have a list of making sure we follow up and at least acknowledge folks who send us letters, so. Maybe yours was before we started doing that, making sure it was happening.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, then I guess we'll talk about it and we'll get back to you very shortly.
Thank you. Just that I'm, I'm concerned about seniors that may not be able to afford that. And, you know, what do they do? Do they go without water and sewer? It's ludicrous.
We're on that same page, but we're under, on our, on our radar.
Good. On another note, where do you, can you buy your red sweatshirts?
Do you like my red sweater? Yes. Well, there's a couple places right now. Front desk of the hotel and at that downtown convenience. Uptown convenience. Yeah, sorry. Mika's Place, AKA Mika's Place.
Okay, thank you. I have people, I have people from out of town messaging me, asking me to buy them for them. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks for coming, Jeanne. Okay, next we have the RCMP.
Ready? Good evening, everyone. So today I'll be presenting the monthly report for the month of January. This past month, we received 160 calls, so quite similar to the same month last year where we got 161 calls. For the first initiative identified by the community being road safety, we have conducted 10 proactive targeted enforcement action. A couple of them being with our bylaw officer, Adam. During these check stops, we stopped approximately 110 vehicles. Five drivers were issued with tickets, several more with warnings, as well as receiving two impaired driving complaints. One of the two led to a charges of impaired driving. A gentleman on his first appearance a few days ago last week pled guilty, so that case was resolved on the first, first instance. I've also sent two of my newest guys on this course. We call it the standard field sobriety test. So don't be surprised if you see police officers conducting these texts, tests roadside. It's basically what you would see on American shows where police officers are asking the, the driver of a vehicle, okay, 10 steps, toe to toe to toes and turn around and come back. We also test their eyes and whatnot, so expect a lot more of those. Five were done last, last month. So expect some more of that. Yeah, so those tests will help us identify people impaired by alcohol or drugs, depending on the results of the test. The second priority identified by the community being community relationship. Mid-January, Stephanie participated in the female hockey tournament. I believe she won a few MVP award, if you would call it like that. Myself, Sean and Jason have also volunteered with the skating, soccer and hockey clubs on 15 occasions. That sums up this priority. We have received again this year, it seems to be average from month to month, six complaints under the Mental Health Act. And if you remember last month, I mentioned that the new directives that we received from our headquarters were that we are not to lodge these people in cells unless there's exigent circumstances. So basically, we're sitting at the hospital for hours and hours with the person until they're cleared by the doctor. Also, notable occurrence for the month, five of us were assaulted by one person, one prisoner in our cells. Two injured, one went to a hospital for a possible fractured hand. That gentleman also attempted to disarm one of us in cells. So that was a, I would say a highlight of the month for us. We had a, if you look at the type of calls we received, again, causing a disturbance and mischief, which is ever take the same complaint, if it's in a public place, we classify the file as causing a disturbance. If it's in a private dwelling house, a private house, that's classified as mischief. Essentially, it's usually comes as in so-and-so is drunk. I don't want him in my house or if they're bothering me outside my place, please remove them. That's the majority of the calls we respond to. We've also lodged 18 prisoners for the month of January. Subject to your questions, I have nothing further to add.
Any questions? Councillor Ferguson?
No, not, nothing questions. Just thank you for doing what you guys do. It looks like it's been a lot busier. It was almost 20 more incidents in this month, occurrences this month than the same month last year at the same point.
Well, in terms of calls, we, we have, we're one under compared to last year. I don't have the stats compared to the previous month.
Oh, yeah.
We're on par with, say, last month. Nothing, nothing of concern. Yeah.
Alright.
So one of the, a community member had approached me and she voiced some concerns about the lack of police visibility, which I disagreed with her. Essentially, she was saying that there wasn't enough police visibility. I countered her with the fact that we're doing a lot more check stops and we're doing these during times where we would expect impaired drivers and whatnot, or when people think we're not on the road when we are. That's why I'm asking my guys to do at least one check stop or enforcement action per block. So they're working six days per block, so I'm asking them to at least do one check stop per, per block.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to say thank you. I know I went through one of your check stops at lunchtime there one day and it was, it was, you did, actually. So it's, it's nice to see out on the road and especially, you know, near the schools and and that. I think it creates a lot of awareness for the community. I just wanted to ask a question about your staffing numbers and are you fully staffed at this point or are you still down a member?
So a short one right now. I, I just lost one of my guys last week during a call. He hurt himself too. Trying to lift a gentleman that was passed out, so he's out for three weeks. Other than that, we're fully staffed until the third week of March where we're losing officially Jordan and Stephanie. Stephanie also found out about two weeks ago that her replacement was identified coming from Fort Resolution. So his name is Dan Doucet, has been in Fort Resolution for the last two years. I'm expecting him June, July. And the reason why he's coming in June, July is because his position cannot be filled, so it's going, it's going to be a constable that's going to be promoted in his position. So the process is a little bit longer, unfortunately.
Any more questions? Yes, councillor.
Thanks again for everything that you guys are doing. I hope everybody heals safely and healthily. I just had gone on the website to see the, the hospital safe room. The tender is due, um, to March the first. So hopefully they'll be able to work more on that. The finance minister was in town yesterday and I brought it up to her saying that if you can do something to expedite that because it's impacting the community in the way that we're having.
That would be amazing. I wasn't aware. That would be great. I, I was in Norman Wells for the last 10 days. They needed a second member to help the only other member that was in town there. Their nursing station has a, has one of those rooms. So for a town of 700, I was quite impressed that they had that. And they have nowhere near the amount of MHA calls that we do. Here, like, the number is clearly justified.
Most certainly. And there had been one, but it had been decommissioned for a certain reason and then it's been brought in. Also, we are, have looked at these, I've told you before that I've taken these to the Regional Wellness Committee and talked to mental health there and they're gonna see if they can do something, but I'm not gonna hold my breath too much for them and I can't speak for them. But we are also looking at bringing it as a resolution as our full town council to the Northwest Territories Association of Communities and Municipalities to lobby for assistance with mental health calls with our CFP policing and that type of thing as well, too.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Hopefully some help will be coming.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Some people need to be followed up on and a little bit more resources would definitely benefit them. What we're seeing is people that are in need of assistance, of counseling, but they won't necessarily reach out. Perhaps if someone else proactively reaches out to them, it would make a difference. Yeah. The one gentleman that assaulted five of us most definitely had some MHA issues. That was clear. I'm no doctor, but it becomes pretty evident.
Any other questions? Yeah, I, I see a serious problem happening here and that, that's what the hospital there, starters. Is, is the patient room we're supposed to bring the patients to? Well, you can't use that, right? From what I'm getting. So, so with that, I, I was gonna bring the leadership together this week, but I, unfortunately I can't because mateys are traveling. But however, the next week, we need to address that. We need to address the women's shelter because that's closing down. Where do you bring these women in battered relationships? Where do you bring the kids? That's gotta be answered.
And that's a massive headache for us, you know, especially in the wintertime when we get a complaint on someone, we're trying to relocate them. No one wants to take them in for various reasons. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to lodge that person in cells. Otherwise, what do you do? Like, we're ultimately responsible. You leave them outside in minus 50, you know what's gonna happen? We're gonna lose that person. And it has, it has happened to me countless of times where we found people frozen to death. So having a shelter for anyone is, is, is a major resource that we all need. And I, I believe our numbers justify having those resources. So I'm not sure if it's because of a funding issue that they're closing the shelter, but it's, it's, it's no, it's terrible.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the person that had it or the company that had it is not filling it out again. And I'm not sure where that at, but the, the only thing there they have to operate is $700,000. That's not enough. By the time you pay your, your, your people, your food, your rent, your gas, your power, it's not enough. The government, we got, you know, we should write, write a letter to the government that we need to talk about this because it's simply, you just can't take it away. I mean, there's something gotta be, be done there. So I guess that's where I'm at with leadership is, yeah, the government has to come up with an answer. Like, all these people, what do you do? If they're locked out of places at night, then they're gonna freeze, like you said. There's no place to bring them. We got a problem here, which needs to be addressed and fixed.
And to be clear, I'm not saying we're putting children or, or, or women in cells. That's absolutely not what's happening. There's certainly some people that we could put in cells, but is that the best solution for them? No, it just becomes a last resort option, unfortunately, you know.
Yeah, and if we start doing that, then the, the other option's never gonna come forward. They're just gonna leave it there. I mean, we've seen that all in the past before. Oh, they're comfortable with that, we'll just leave it. So that's not the answer either.
You know, we try to be creative with solutions, but there's a limit on what we can actually do as well, so.
Yeah, it is, it is from our point of view. It gets frustrating from the people's point of view of Fort Smith is everything seems to be going, going to Yellinay. And no matter what it is, they take jobs, they put it over there, they don't open these jobs, everything and and, 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 you know, basically everything's gonna yell on it because the mines are closing down, but what are you doing to these small communities? I mean, you take a look at our health center. I mean, i- it's a Band-Aid solution. That's what it's like. You have to go to Yellinay first. But, but in those times, you're playing with a lot of, a lot of time on sick people. Like, all this gotta be addressed, so. Anyway, I thank you. And like I said, those have to be addressed and, thanks. Herr Bolio?
Yeah, speaking on behalf of the shelter, I'm not sure 100% that it's gonna shut down. It's gone out for bid and I do know that there are some bidders, whether they get it or not. There's hope. There's a lot of policies that fall around the shelter, so we have guidelines that we have to follow on who can come into the shelter and the condition they're coming into. A lot of times, like you're speaking about mental health and stuff, that's a big issue for us. And because of their addictions, there are limited women and families that could come into the shelter and we don't have any other options in Fort Smith. The other option we had was a homeless shelter that was run by Salt River First Nations and I know now it's a healing center. It's no longer a homeless shelter. And we only have eight beds in the shelter, so we can only take a certain amount of people. And this coming out of COVID, we are still running into COVID issues, so we have to watch for an outbreak when we're working in the shelter. And hopefully it doesn't shut down. Our closing date is March 31st. And we don't have any other options in Fort Smith. And like the mayor said, everything is going up to Yellinay. The people that previously had the contract are from the Yellinay situation of the YWCA. They no longer want to take on the contract because the cost is too low and too expensive to operate the shelter. That's the reason they backed out of it and they don't want to operate out of Yellinay to have a shelter here in Fort Smith. They'd rather move it up to Yellinay and run it over there.
Any other questions? I thank you for coming and giving your report. Thanks. I see.
You know how much I love writing letters. I'm wondering if maybe the minister responsible for homelessness needs to make a visit to Fort Smith because our regional shelter for homeless folk is in Hay River. Not sure how we're gonna get people who need to be home and housed into Hay River, but perhaps council might want to invite this minister for visit.
Yeah, why don't we just work it and see if we could get it when the leadership's all here also and then with council or whatever it is. Thanks. Councillor Kebel?
Well, this women's shelter, that's a pretty big point. We gotta be getting on it right now because I, I don't see it out for tender anymore. I seen it once, now it's not out there. So we gotta be pushing right now before they award it to someone like Officer Bolio saying Yellinay for somewhere else. We gotta be pushing. So I think we should write a letter getting the Minister of Homelessness and for women here and giving us some answers. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we'll start that letter tomorrow. Is there anything else? Take approval of agenda. We have minutes.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of 01-23 of January 17th, 2023 be adopted as presented.
All set. Questions?
Councillor Cooper? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of not really questions, just want to keep it on everybody's radar. In about a month and a half, the new carbon taxes would be kicking in. And I had a, was fortunate to have a discussion with the minister yesterday. And unfortunately, the situation is carbon tax is coming whether the NWT Legislative Assembly votes for it or against it. It's a federal taxes being levied. And their, her role in it is whether the NWT government gets to control the funding that's a result of the tax or whether taxes go to Ottawa and then they issue rebates in to individuals and keep a portion of the revenues or they may send it back. It's so much, so much uncertainty about what would happen with revenues. I'm just, would like to suggest I, I have a letter writing exercise, but we should consider writing our MP, Mr. McLeod, and possibly getting him to co-op with the MPs from the Yukon and Nunavut to try and convince the boneheads in Ottawa that heating fuel within the three territories should be exempt. You've made exemptions for aviation fuels for the three territories. Yes, aviation is a critical part of living in the north, but so is heating your friggin' house. So I would suggest we write MP McLeod and ask him to initiate discussions with the other three, the other two MPs. And the other notable exemption is they've exempted all power corp, power courts in all three jurisdictions from, for power generation for municipal uses is also an exemption. So it's not like they, they're not considering exemptions. Why can't they consider an exemption for the, the three territories until such a time as we have an affordable alternative? Right now, there is no affordable alternatives. Then on a second matter with regards to the minutes, we were also talking about the Public Service Annual Report, which the minister replied to. We all saw the letter and the game of smoke and mirrors. They put out an annual report that shows 73 positions. They have it under job growth. When you look at the PSA Public Service Annual Report, minister writes us, tells us, there's employees hired and positions, no new positions created. Yet they'll take all the credit that they can for the, that they're doing job growth in Fort Smith. So I was really disappointed. We got basically no details in that letter from the minister, so. And just, I'm gonna suggest we write her again and ask her some really pointed questions this time. Such things as asking, how many positions have actually been created from 2018 to 2022 in Fort Smith? How many of those, how many positions have actually been removed from organizational charts in Fort Smith? Positions that have been reclassified, possibly downgraded from regional superintendents to senior clerks and things like that. And then also as well, they said there was no people reboot. there was, uh, no people remote, working remotely. But I know of two. We have the president of our college, which is a physician that's supposed to be based in Fort Smith, living in Yellowknife. How many other positions are working that way?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to follow up that in the letter that was addressed from the minister, they did say if we wanted additional information, to reach out to the Regional Superintendent of HR. So I did do that. I sent a request asking that they list all of the new positions, which ones were filled currently, and to identify any of them that were recreated as a result of the change to the UNW collective agreement in the last round of bargaining, when they removed or changed how casuals were identified and how long you could work as a casual. So those positions may have already existed in a casual basis where they were just rotating people in for a year, two years at a time. So they wouldn't technically be new, they were already there in a lot of instances, I think. But they were forced into a position where they had to create a position. So I just, I sent that today. I expect a response at some point, hopefully. I'm optimistic.
And the other? Okay. Asil.
I can just comment on Counselor Pruvet's two topics. We were just reviewing our fourth quarter variance today. And as we talk about the carbon tax and the rebates, cost of heating fuel for our buildings and for gas and oil for our vehicles has gone up dramatically, like we're looking at in some of our buildings, $10,000 increase for the cost of heating fuel. We have some buildings that are not very efficient, which does not help. But at the same time, it hasn't been that cold of a winter up to the end of 2022. And our heating fuel costs have gone up dramatically, which you'll see next month when we present that. I also sent some emails out in regards to the positions. So I sent emails to the COO of the Health Center, as well as the Superintendent of Education, to try and get information from them directly about where they had 32 new positions in education in Fort Smith and 27 new positions in Health and Social Services in Fort Smith. I haven't received a fulsome response from the COO, although she's confused about where those positions might be. The superintendent emailed me just a bit after five o'clock, so I haven't gotten that out to you yet. But it looks like maybe four new positions have been created. What they're talking about is the number of people who look like they've gone from indeterminate or from short-term terms to indeterminate positions. So again, it's, you know, it's like when the media says, you know, 100% chance of this gonna happen, well, 100% chance doesn't really mean 100% chance because you can play with those numbers to make it say whatever you want it to say, right? So it does appear maybe it's not entirely accurate. In regards to new employment, it might just be a change from status of one type of employment to another with the GNWT. So we're gonna continue to, uh, follow up on that from all fronts, I think. Directly the departments that are affected and human resources to see what we can come up with an actual number. And maybe some org charts.
Thanks. Anyone else? None, I see none. Business arising for minutes, right? A declaration of financial interest. Okay, um, council's business, gee.
I move that the Corporate Services Standing Committee minutes from February 7th, 2023 be adopted as presented. I'll second that.
Discussion? See none, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I'll move that Bylaw 1044, 2023 Annual Boring Bylaw be brought forward to council for first and second reading.
I'll second. Question? No question, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I'll move that Bylaw 1045 Consolidated Rates and Fees Bylaw be brought forward to council for first and second reading as amended.
I'll second. Questions? Counselor Larry Ferguson.
Was there a change you were talking about to something in the rates and fees?
Any other questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I move that the Community Services Standing Committee minutes from February 14th, 2023 be adopted as presented. I'll second that.
Question? No questions? Mike Griffin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, at the Corporate, or at the Community Services Standing Committee, I made a statement regarding the Northern Indigenous Counseling program that was, that's delivered by the Denny Wellness Warriors. And in reading what I said, I just wanted to further clarify that I think what they're doing is fantastic. Uh, they're picking up where the government has dropped the ball, and I just wanted to be clear in that until the government can pick up the ball, they should continue doing what they are, so. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any questions anywhere? None, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I move that the mayor and administration prepare an invitation to the minister responsible for MACA to meet with council.
I'll second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I move that patron of vote Sebastian Burke and J.C. McDonald be appointed to the Community Services Advisory Board for Terms ended December 31st, 2024. I'll second that.
Questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer. One abstention.
I'll move that the Municipal Services Standing Committee minutes from February 14th, 2023 be adopted as presented. I'll second.
Questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, press your answer.
I'll move that the purchase of a compactor, including delivery and training, be sole sourced from Superior North America for 700, or sorry, for $375,000, and that $100,000 be budgeted towards the tendering of storage shed building at the landfill.
I'll second. Questions? Mr. Gumbel.
We asked a couple of questions, are we getting warranty on this item? And the other one is about having somebody in Yellowknife go do an inspection for us, thanks.
Asil.
So thank you, I did have the director follow up and find us, get us the answers to those questions. So my understanding in regards to the hours on the motor, and I am not mechanically inclined, but so there's 8,645 hours on the motor, motor or on the piece of equipment. It has a 15,000-hour lifecycle. We're anticipating using up to about 500 hours a year, so this will give us around 14 years before we need to talk about replacement, rebuilding, or risk managing a piece of equipment. Second part was, we have a mechanic in Yellowknife lined up to do a pre-inspection before it leaves Yellowknife. So that's dealt with. It will come with a short-term warranty, and we are getting pricing on longer-term warranty items. We're working with the vendor and well as a local contractor, local mechanic, whom the vendor is already in touch with around being able to service this piece of equipment. So that will be dealt with, we'll have local servicing, which is great because some of our equipment requires us to send it out. So those are, I think that answers all the questions.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, thanks.
Thank you for that. Can you define short-term warranty? And what it covers, is it full powertrain?
We're still waiting on the details for what that short-term warranty will look like. And then options for the long-term warranty. So I don't have all of that information, unfortunately.
Thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Gumbel.
Are we anticipating only 500 hours per year? That's like 10 weeks. That doesn't seem too long, and our machine already has 8,600 hours. 8,600, 800, 8,645 hours. And we're, and we're, our projected plan is 500 hours per year? And if we go over that, we could be, we could run this machine out in two years, two, three years? I don't know, just seems quite high.
Asil.
Yeah, so we're anticipating about, we're anticipating probably compacting once a week. Full compaction once a week for this machine. We do, we really do need a compactor. We're really in a situation where our life, our landfill's not meeting its expected life, useful life, because there's not. There's too much airspace, and we can't, we can't get rid of that airspace with a loader, which has been sort of the strategy to date. And so we're costing ourselves a lot more money on closing and opening cells. And the next cells we opened, like the current cell that we have, was developed before some of the requirements around groundwater came in, so it has no liner. And it was created through the removal of cover for the old cell to create this cell. But all of our cells from now on are gonna require liners, so it's gonna be significantly more expensive for landfill management. And so we want to make sure that we are maximizing the life of each of those cells. And the ideal way to do it is through a compactor. We said, you know, that's a 750 to a million dollar purchase for a brand-new compactor. If council thinks that that's a better system or a better solution, we're happy to purchase a brand-new compactor. When we spoke to, when I spoke to vendors at a conference in the spring, they said for the size of our community and the size of our landfill, that they would suggest a refurbished machine because we would get better return on our dollar for the life of the machine versus having a brand-new machine. So that's kind of, and then this machine came available through the directors networking in the territory around landfill operations. So that's why we're presenting it to you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I'm not opposed to the second-hand piece of equipment, but I think that we need to have the detail around what the short-term warranty entails, what the cost of the long-term warranty is, and what the inspection from first, what, we need to know what the result of the inspection is before. I'd have a comfort level saying, yeah, we're good to go.
Asil.
So what we could suggest is that the, in particular, the, um, sorry, I'm not feeling great tonight, so I'm a little bit, a little, um, that the motion be amended to, based on a satisfactory third-party inspection of the machine. And and maybe something around the warranty, right? Because we're gonna bring, we're gonna get that machine inspected. Council should not have an input onto whether or not the machine is satisfactory because council is not expert heavy equipment mechanics. That's, that's more of an operational decision. But if, if it, if this machine appears to be in the condition that we are anticipating it's in, and it is going to operate, and perhaps we have, you know, a satisfactory warranty that's going to cover specific things, you know, council may want to amend it because what's gonna happen is if we don't, if we don't kind of secure it, because he's kind of holding it for us at the moment, if we don't secure it at some point, they will go to another, it will go out to other purchasers.
Counselor Tuckey.
Well, you know, I'm kind of confused here, and maybe I'm getting mixed up with something else here. But I thought when this virtually initially came to our attention, this piece of equipment was described as a demo up in Yellowknife. And I wasn't expecting that a demo would have 8,000 hours. That's almost half, half the life of the equipment. And I, to be honest, we're not going to get a good, we're not going to get a good, uh, warranty on something that's, that's gone through half its life. It's not gonna happen. I mean, we go out and buy a car, use cars, we can buy a demo, we get a good deal, 15,000 kilometers, maybe 20. But a good demo, you can buy a demo with 100,000 kilometers on it, you're walking into a basket of trouble possibly. Now, I just want, I just wanted to get some truth here, jog anybody's, we were told this was a demo piece of equipment, where we're not 8,000, 8,000 hours is not a demo. I know enough, enough about heavy equipment that 8,000 hours is getting up there. And I'm getting kind of leery about the whole thing myself. Because that's a lot of money. Actually, for a piece of equipment, that's not a lot of money. So I don't know, I think we need to do some more research into this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so I have a couple of additional comments, and I, I did not mean when I, the third-party evaluation is, is fine, I mean, that's what we would get someone to evaluate for. I don't think that our collective expertise is, like you said, heavy-duty mechanics. I do have a concern in that you said they were looking at the cost of an additional warranty, so I think depending on how great or small that cost would might, might be, I think that's of concern to council and something that should come to our table. And 8,600 hours, a definition of a demo does not necessarily mean something brand-new that's just sitting on the lot, it could be something that they've taken and used in multiple locations to demonstrate that piece of equipment. So the 8,600 hours, I mean, it seems high, we don't know. I'm not saying that it's good or bad, I guess because I don't know this specific piece of equipment or the lifecycle of that piece of equipment. But I think it's important that we're getting value for our money and that once that evaluation happens from the third-party independent person, we're sure that that amended price, half-price, whatever it is, is good value. And that we're gonna get an additional 14 years or whatever. And maybe that's a good value based on this piece of equipment, I don't know. We're gonna pay two times as much and still get the same amount of time, then, you know, this is a good deal. I think it's, it needs to be really clear, and I'm not totally clear right at this point as to how good or not good this deal is.
Counselor Gumbel.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Deputy Mayor. And I'm for this, but we need like Deputy Mayor and everybody else here said, we need a good warranty, we need something that's in writing. Let's look, let's ask them for what their new value warranty and everything is. And let's go from that thing and then make it, make a decision. I'm not in favor of voting for this for tonight if we have to wait a month. Able to turn. Yeah. And that's it, thank you.
Thanks, SEO.
Yeah, I think those are all good questions. I mean, the director was trying to get this to you in a Tommy fashion from last week to this week. And we can flesh this out a bit more. My understanding, and I, I will go back and look at this, but when I looked at it, the useful life of such a machine would be fifteen to twenty years. However, they're talking about the useful life of such a machine in a full-size municipal landfill, right? Not our tiny little landfill, relatively speaking. So ideally, we would get to the top end of that useful life. So we'll come back to you for council next month with a bit more detail around this. And hopefully we'll have had the third-party inspection done by then. And we'll try and maybe get you a couple of ideas about cost of a new machine and what cost of warranty, how warranty works on that new machine as well. So, and I think somebody asked me last week what the brand was, and it's a Tana, T-A-N-A.
Deputy Mayor.
Just one follow-up. Would you be able to provide the useful life in hours as opposed to years? Years is kind of an abstract. I mean, it, you know, what's the average number of hours per year, et cetera? So the useful life in total hours that will give us a better perspective based on the eighty-six hundred of what, how much actual life is left in the machine typically? Thank you.
Seal.
Yeah, and I think that this particular machine, the, what the director was led to understand was it would be about fifteen thousand hours of life cycle. But I'll confirm that is, is that the remaining anticipated life cycle after the eighty-six hundred? Or is that total life cycle? So I think that's a question as well. So I'll get some of these things firm up for you.
Okay, so let's take, or Counselor Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to make a motion to table the decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, no questions, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I move that DPA zero zero one dash two-three submitted by Larry Denwell, Senior, to operate a home occupation, construction, and building maintenance services business from lot six-one-nine, plan three-one-nine, four Renn Crescent in Fort Smith be approved.
I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I move that DPA dash zero zero three dash two-three submitted by Phil Norwegian to operate a home occupation, electrical, and renovation contracting service business from lot eight-two-seven, plan five-eight-five, three-ninety-six, Calder Avenue in Fort Smith be approved.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Mr. Gumbel.
Are we putting in there that they're still going to follow all bylaws and everything? Like National Building Code? Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? See none, all in favor? Question answer.
I move that, I move that unsightly lands order appeal for sixteen Camerac crescents submitted by Wade Johnson be denied.
I'll second that.
Any questions? SEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson was extended an invitation to delegate this evening and he declined.
Any more questions? Counselor Ferguson.
I know it was brought up in discussion when we talked about this unsightly land last. How many more properties in Fort Smith was discovered to have C-cans? And if, then were they actioned upon for an unsightly? Thanks.
Seal.
So there are, were total, including Mr. Johnson's, nine C-cans identified. Mr. Johnson's and one other one were given remediation orders. We had an appeal by the other gentleman, I mean, remediation stance. The, one of the other ones was given the verbal update that they had to remove it, and it's been since removed. The other ones have not been actioned because they were not, these, these ones that were particularly actions were properties that were significantly not in compliance. So they were the ones reactioned first. The other ones will be continued re-actioned as we move forward. So we focused on the ones that were non-compliant for a number of reasons. The C-can was one of those things, mostly in that rat guarding unsightly lands. And then the other six that are remaining currently are going to be part of the next of enforcement.
Thanks, any more questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I move that DPA dash zero zero four dash two-three submitted by Paul Cumming to operate a home occupation, snow removal contracting business from lot five-one-eight, plan two-three-five, three-seven-eight Calder Avenue in Fort Smith be approved.
I'll second. Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I'll move that DPA dash zero zero six dash two-three submitted by Cameron Phillips to operate a home occupation, small engine equipment and sales business from lot thirteen, block eighteen, plan two-one-two-nine, Tarmigan Street in Fort Smith be approved, pending compliance for signage as per zoning bylaw nine-three-six.
I'll second. Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I'll move that, yeah, I know. Yeah, I'll move that bylaw one zero four-four, two zero two-three, annual borrowing bylaw be introduced and given first reading. Whereas the council of the municipal corporation of the town of Fort Smith and the Northwest Territories deems it to be in the public interest to borrow money that may be required to meet expenditures during the 2023 fiscal year. Now, therefore, the council of the town of Fort Smith at a duly-assembled meeting enacts the follows, as follows. One, that the mayor and senior administrative officer of the town of Fort Smith and Northwest Territories are hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fort Smith to borrow money. Two, that the total amount of money so borrowed shall up, be up to but not exceeding six hundred thousand dollars. Three, such money shall be borrowed from the Bank of Montreal, Fort Smith, Northwest Territories, and repaid thereto together with interest at a rate mutually agreed therewith. Four, all money so borrowed shall be repaid out of and shall be the first charge upon the town revenue of the town of Fort Smith for the year 2023. Five, the estimated revenue of the town of Fort Smith set forth on the estimates for the year of 2023 are twelve million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Six, that bylaw number one zero two-six is hereby repealed. And that's it. I'll second.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I move that bylaw one zero four-four dash two zero two-three, annual borrowing bylaw be given second reading by title only.
Second that.
Any questions? See none, all in favor? All in favor, question answer.
I move that bylaw one zero four-five, consolidated rates and fees bylaw be introduced and given first reading. Whereas the council of the municipal corporation of the town of Fort Smith and the Northwest Territories deems it to be expedient and wishes to both consolidate and update the various fees and charges collected by the town of Fort Smith. Now, therefore, the council of the town of Fort Smith at a duly-assembled meeting enacts as follows. One, that this bylaw may be cited for all purposes as the consolidated rates and fees bylaw. Two, the council of the town of Fort Smith does now set the rates and fees for services described in the schedules attached to this bylaw as schedules A two K. Three, that schedules A two K, they're attached here to form part of this bylaw. And number four, repeal that bylaw one zero three zero with schedules A to L is hereby repealed.
I'll second. Any questions? SEO. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
So I just had the one question regarding the paper billing fee. We discussed in committee that it wouldn't apply to residential billing and it would only apply to commercial or industrial or business. So I didn't see it actually written exactly that way in the bylaw. It was fairly generic in how it was, how it appeared. So I just wanted to clarify that it will indicate that in that it only, doesn't apply to residential.
Okay, SEO.
Yes, that is the case. It will, and it will be clear in the bylaw. I'll have it written in there. I have a second thing, Mr. Mayor. Council indulge me around this bylaw.
Just good.
So we have received the information from ECE in regards to the funding that we will receive for our daycare spaces for 2023, or the, the next section of funding, whether we'll get another bit, I don't know. We've also been told, so one of the parts of being in part of the funding scheme is that we can only raise childcare fees, daycare fees that are subsidized by two percent for the year. So I wonder if council would like to consider that based on the fact that we will have wages increasing. So the cost of the daycare does go up. The two percent, based on the funding, if we raise it two percent, the users of the program will pay just over seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is less than what they currently pay because we'll be having the next set of, the next level of funding available to us. So they still see a reduction in the fees, but we're able to cost-recover the increases in costs for salary and inflation with that two percent, or some of, not, not all of inflation, but some of it with that two percent increase.
Any more questions?
Thank you. So I've just, what are they paying right now? About seven hundred dollars a monthly fee for one person? So what is the current fee right now?
So our fee is one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. They're currently subsidized to just over eight hundred dollars. And when the new set of funding comes in and we reimburse, because we actually reimburse, so they actually pay it and then we reimburse it. There'll be, I think it's like seven hundred and fifty-four dollars is what they'll be paying. So they'll still see a decrease in their fees overall. And they'll be paying like one percent, like, it'll be two, people paying one percent of that increase.
Counselor Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the bylaw, we have, I didn't write down what section it is, but a portion of it deals with sponsorship and naming of buildings and things like that. And I just wanted to emphasize that we really need to sit down during, sooner than later, to revisit those, what is listed as the rates and fees in the bylaw. I think it's a great opportunity for the town of Fort Smith to raise additional revenues and also presents opportunities for businesses and other people in our community to recognize individuals and things like that through sponsorship of buildings or benches and things like that. So I just wanted to bring it up that we should try and address this sooner than later.
Thanks, SEO.
I would like Counselor Cruvat to get out of my head. We're actually working on developing that. So one of the things that the Economic Development Officer and the Director of Community Services is working on is sort of our, our streetscaping and signage so that we could have consistent signage for people who sponsor benches. And as we look towards new benches, what those designs will be. So we're, we're actually working on that same thing with like picnic tables and trees. And if anybody wants, council would like to buy a room and name it after me, I would be okay with that. Don't name a, don't name a road after me. I'd prefer you name a recreation facility after me.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. I just wanted to go back to the two percent for the daycare fee. I think we debated this quite well during committee, that the proposed ten percent, original ten percent increase where we were not in favor of. I think at this point, I'm personally not in favor of increasing the fee. I think we've already included the wage increases in our existing budget that we passed for this year. I'd certainly entertain looking at it the next time around to see what the potential opportunities are. And hopefully, as time goes, the subsidies that come from the federal or territorial government will continue to increase and provide us with a better opportunity. Having said that, I think it's important that we take a very close look at the actual costs over the next coming months of what the program is actually costing us. I think we've identified that it's cost recovery right now. So hopefully, that's, that's accurate and we are cost recovering or really close to cost recovery. But I think until we can get a really clear picture of what those numbers truly are, and I'm not saying that they're not accurate, I'm just saying that we, we need to make sure that we're capturing all of the potential costs for the program and that we're looking at overall, if there's something we need to do differently, or if we need to, to find another way moving forward. So that's, that's just my thought.
SEO.
Yeah, so, and I, I mean, the, the debate that council had last week, nope, two weeks ago, was more related to the after-school care increases, which are not legislated. So this is, I just bring this forward to you because this is, this has now become a legislated situation where we cannot increase more than what they're allowing us to increase, which is one of the reasons day homes in particular struggled with this way they were doing this. So if we find that is not cost recovery, we're not going to be able to go back and try and recover any of those costs because we won't be able to raise the rates more than whatever the allocated amount is for per year. We're, at least we're hoping it'll be per year. We don't actually know yet because this is the first year we've had it. So we'll see how this all rolls out. It's very, still very unclear to all of us about how all of this is going to work. And, you know, as we stand, I hope the council does not consider closing the daycare because at this point, we still don't have any other childcare options. There are no other childcare facilities currently operating in the town of Fort Smith. And once the MATE is open, they will have, not have enough spots to cover our waitlist for the preschool age group. They'll only about have about half of the kids on that waitlist. And we still don't have, still don't have infant spots. And I don't think the MATE were considering that at all. So it's definitely an, an economic need, economic need in the community.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for that, Miss White. Yeah, I, I wasn't, that was not part of the thought process. I, I think it's just important that we've identified that cost recovery of the daycare is important to the mayor and council. And so ensuring that the program costs